Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Are these on? Welcome to the Standing Committee Meetings. Hello?
Hello?
Nope. I'm gonna assume that the microphones are working. I don't think so.
Testing.
Welcome to the Tuesday, July 25th, Standing Committee Meetings for Seneca County. First up is Public Works Supervisor Cronenweather.
I guess we don't have... Does that sound like it works now, huh? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Issue number one is Board of Supervisors authorize new three-year recycling contract with J.E. Gibson, Inc., D.B.A. as Cardinal disposal.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Number two is Board of Supervisor authorizes snow and ice shared services agreement with Town of Fayette.
Support. Tag it.
Any discussion? Roy?
No, it's just the same contract every year.
Alrighty. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number three, Seneca County Board of Supervisors declared of surplus vehicles and authorized auction of the same.
Support.
Have a second?
Tag it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No, it's just an old ten-wheeler we won at an auction. Two thousand and six, I think it is.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four, Board of Supervisor authorizes contract with Unified Court Systems for court cleaning and minor repairs. Have a motion and a second?
Tag it. Port.
Robert?
It's a basic house clean... cleaning. Do it every year. Or every three years. This is a five-year contract, so we bumped this up two more years.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Issue number five, Board of Supervisors support amendment to agreement with New York State for the New York State Veteran Cemetery, Finger Lakes, and authorizes bid solicitation. Have a motion and a second? I make a motion? Ernie, second? Any discussion? I guess it's in here. If you read it, it's just for us to do some of the bidding and the... New York's paying for it, but we're gonna help them out. And no other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Board of Supervisors authorizes New York State grant application for restoration of Papa Bear Cuplo.
Port.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on this? Pretty self-explanatory, I think. No more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And that's all we have for tonight for Public Works.
Thank you. Next up is Water and Sewer Treatment Management Operation Supervisor Hayes.
Thank you Supervisor Chairman. We have any updates Mitch from our last meeting?
Just maybe a few updates for the other members of the board. We... You had called a special meeting of the Water and Sewer Committee Meeting last Tuesday night. Work is ongoing with the WQIP grant request for the two plant upgrades. We have had some communication with New York State docs. Unfortunately, it didn't get us closer to where we hoped to get with the firm commitment on the percent of their contribution to the projects. And so work is ongoing on the grants and negotiations with doc. So those are probably the highlights from the meeting last Tuesday.
Thanks Mitch. Anybody have any questions for Mitch or myself? Committee adjourned.
Thank you. Next up is Human Resources and Government Operations Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First issue, Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one full-time children's services director in the Mental Health Department.
Support.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Are any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye opposed? Issue two, Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one full-time senior real property tax services... Wait a minute. That's not the one we're... We are good on that one? Alright, that's not the one we just tabled. Okay. One full-time senior real property tax services aide position in the RPTS department?
Support.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Issue three, Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one part-time senior social welfare examiner position in DHS?
Support.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Issue four, Board of Supervisors approves the reclassification and filling of two full-time labor positions to motor equipment operators light in the Highway Department?
Support.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those who abstain?
Abstain.
Just no mic extension. Issue five, Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one full-time staff resource assistant two in the Veterans Department?
Support.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Issue six, refill the following vacancies on the various departments. So I would go... I would recommend all those, but I would delete the G.I.S. mapping technician.
Yeah. Support.
Amanda, does that make sense? We're gonna delete that one. Okay. Is there a second? Second. Any questions? So just so the committee knows, from vacancy, we've asked for some more information and Supervisor Reinhardt's gonna gather that information, working with Lisa, in terms of the real property tax service mapping technician. So that's why we're... Half a vacancy, yep. So we're gonna get more information on that before we go ahead with that. Was there a second?
Second.
All those... Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other... Any other unfinished business for the committee? There was... I know we had emailed back and forth. There were some questions about the future salaries for 2024 for elected officials and department heads, and we're continuing to work on that. We've got time to do it based upon our special committee meeting that we had whenever, a couple of weeks ago. So we weren't gonna do it tonight, but we do have... Well, we are in process, and I got Mitch and Kyle are working on some things, so.
Jeff, just one question. Do you believe there's gonna be enough time if we keep this at the committee schedule, or is this something we should consider having a... another special meeting? Special committee meeting to go over to devote the time that it's gonna need?
Yeah, I'm okay with having a special committee meeting if that's what it takes. But I think... I know Mitch and I talked the other day, and I think we're on... I think we have good amount of time. Correct Mitch? I mean, we're not... Yeah, okay. I think we'll be okay. With that, any other new business? Then committee's closed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is Ways and Means Supervisor Reynolds.
Thank you Chairman Enzal. Number one, I will call the Ways and Means Committee together, and I'm missing a couple of people, but I think we got just enough to get the job done. Number one, Seneca County Board of Supervisors adopts Seneca County equalization rates for 2024 county tax appointments or portions for prior to November 15th, 2023.
Support.
Second. First and second.
Ivy, come on. You can just come up here and talk. Or come up here and you may as well talk.
General housekeeping. We have to do this every year.
Okay, yeah. Any questions? I guess hearing none. Thank you Lisa, and we'll... All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none. Number two, Board of Supervisors approves workman's compensation budget for the year 2024.
Port.
Second.
First and second? We talking about this, or you don't? Do you know anything about it, or... I see it's up a little bit from last year.
Mitch and I put the information together. We looked at the budget what happened last year, tried to anticipate claims that will be coming through this year. We've actually finished up one or two that had been lingering for a while, so just got recent notification. A couple of those will be finished, so that'll save the county some money.
Who's handling workman's comp? Rhonda's?
Me, right now.
You're doing it? Okay.
I'm trying to do that, and the risk management, and I'm doing okay in the interim. I have the people that I can contact if I have specific questions, so handling the vehicle fleets as they come in, getting the titles, getting them to the insurance companies to get them registered, so... Yeah, I'm... It's not sustainable long-term, but it's definitely... You know, we're keeping afloat right now, so.
Okay, well, I'll call you tomorrow, I guess. Thanks. Did we vote on it? Oh, workman's comp... Let's sort of vote on the workman's comp budget. All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Hearing none? We'll go down to Board of Supervisors authorized amendments to 2023 Seneca County budget. That would be Haley.
Yes, this is a request from the probation department to appropriate some funds from the A.T.I. Reserve. They had some new hires this year, and they're requiring to have to purchase some more shirts and jackets that say probation on it to outfit these new hires, so they wanted to utilize these funds that we have in reserve.
Any questions for Haley? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Is there any old business the Ways and Means should be looking at? I hear nothing. Question for Mitch, I guess. How's the budget moving along or on schedule?
Yes, we kicked off on Friday, June 30th, at the department level, so the departments have been doing their entries. Laura is working hard in her spare time because all of the salary and fringe entries get made in the personnel office, not by the departments. The departmental deadline is Friday, September 1st, the Friday going into Labor Day weekend. So the departments have about another five weeks to finish at the department level, and then we will... Within Munis, we will roll from level one, which is department level, to level two. And at that point, Kyle and I, Haley and others, will be working together to kind of try to pull it all together, see what the tax levy's gonna look like. Certainly paying attention to the sales tax and the gaming revenues because those are both a big part of putting it all together. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
We're year-to-date about a million dollars over where we were this time last year.
That's good.
Yeah, anytime you got a plus anymore, it's a good deal. Bob, what do you... Got something?
Question. Some time ago, we talked about possibility of getting a budget report every... at every meeting. Where does that stand? Is that... You talked about you're gonna look into it?
Yes, I was. I talked to Haley about it a while ago. Haley, any updates on that?
Yeah, if you start providing it, I can talk to Kyle and Mitch about how much comprehensive or detailing one.
You know, I... I think we could keep it very simple. Where do we stand year-to-date each month?
I like one sheet of paper. Everyone... Yeah, one page, definitely, so.
You know, it's February, and we use 50% for a projected budget. We have five.
Right. Yeah, the one-page report would be fine with me.
I'd love to receive that committee. I'll get it for you in August.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yep, perfect.
Thank you.
Can we get that possibly in our committee packets ahead of time so that we have it before we show up here?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Shouldn't we give Haley a little more guidance as to what would be... Or Mitch, somebody on that one page? Because I mean, it's one thing, like, we do it monthly for the towns. Like, I get a budget report, and I know where we are. It sounds like that, you know, either it's...
But it's not one page even at the town level. It's not even...
Right, yeah, that's...
So I don't know how you could condense a county budget down to one page, but...
It may be Haley, if you have...
Maybe a couple pages.
I could live with two. Yeah, or two or three. Alright, less than a Bible. Less than a Bible. Less than a Bible. Alright. Right, we could do it by department.
Do you want department detail, or do you just want across the general fund, total salaries, total fringe, total contractual lines to just compare the totals, or do you want department-level detail?
I would like department-level.
Yeah, I'd like to know how closely...
Okay.
Your budget.
Right, yeah, departments. Departments would be fine.
Yeah, that's definitely gonna be more than one sheet of paper, but we'll work on it.
Yeah, I'm realizing that now. I tried for Haley, but it did work out. Sorry. Yeah, if we can... I think they can get it semi-easy. Anything else from Ways and Means?
Just one question. Looking at those equalization rates, is there something going on in the South End? Like, I'm just... But I mean...
They haven't done a reassessment in many, many years.
Is there a reason I'm missing why?
Don't pick on us.
Well, I know...
Like, really low.
Yeah, we're talking with our assessor. We were set to think about doing it before COVID hit, and then COVID hit, and it kind of went away, and we're gonna be discussing it here, so.
We're doing one next year. I got a new assessor, and he's having a stroke. He don't want anything below 80%, and we're at 75, so he's definitely gonna... We're gonna...
I mean, we've gotta do it too. I just was curious when you guys were gonna do yours.
I think we're gonna try and do it next year.
Yeah, it should be in the next year, I'm thinking.
Okay. I think Mr. Chairman, Ways and Means is done for the night.
Thank you. Next up is Health and Human Services Supervisor Boers.
Thank you Chairman Enzal. I'll call the Health and Services Committee to order. Issue number one, Board of Supervisor authorizes acceptance of $240,736 in contract funds from Seneca Falls Central School District, Waterloo Central School District, South Seneca Central School District, and Romulus Central School District to support school-based substance abuse prevention and school-based clinic services for school year 2023-2024. They get a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, Margaret?
So we enter into contracts with each of the school districts every year for provision of services. As Supervisor Boers mentioned, we provide substance abuse prevention, counseling, and education services in all of the districts, and we have clinics in all of the schools. So some of those positions are shared positions, or the districts contribute something to the substance abuse prevention service positions. So we're just looking to renew all of those contracts.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Issue number two, Supervisors approve Glove House Services contract amendment.
We... There is a program that we receive state aid for... From the New York State Office of Mental Health to provide... It's called Home-Based Crisis Intervention Services. It's one of the highest levels of care we have for kids who are at risk of placement outside of their home due to a mental illness. Glove House has been the provider of this service for us for a number of years now, and the state is looking to expand this service in response to a lot of kids' crisis, mental health crisis that we're having, the growing crisis among kids throughout the state. So they gave us quite a bit of funds to increase these services, and we're proposing expanding the current contract that we have with Glove House to... So that we can open this up to provide services to more families.
Alright, any questions? So this is a separate part of Glove House, if you want to speak to it?
Yeah, so that was Department of Human Services, and it was a different department. It's a different group of people providing the services.
Yeah, Margaret and I've had some discussions, along with Mitch, and Margaret's done her homework, and yeah, it seems...
I mean, we monitor these services very closely. There's monthly meetings, and if people aren't meeting their... the requirements, then we address it. So we meet regularly with Glove House and all of our contractors to assess quality.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Issue number three, Board of Supervisors approves appointment of Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board member. Alright. Tracy?
Hi, this is just housekeeping as our partnership with the Workforce Investment Board. They have a new person entering in for a representative, Gabrielle Simmons out of Waddams, for a three-year term.
Tracy, what is this board?
The Workforce Investment Board was created some years ago. Mike is the expert on this. And we're part of that as partnership because we have workforce development. They have certain funds that they give out. We, right now, are just a partner with them. Their funds are through county agencies. I know Ontario and Yates County partner with them and receive funds, and then there's Wayne County. They have a school district committee that receives funds for them, more for their youth. They do adult dislocated worker, helping people find jobs. So it's kind of an additional service to what our workforce does.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Issue number four, Seneca County Division of Human Services to transfer ownership of Dodge Caravan to Town of Ovid.
Support.
We've received some of our new vehicles that we ordered back, I believe in October, so we now have three vehicles that we will need to... That is surplus, and I know that I had three requests. One was the Town of Ovid. The other two will be going interdepartmental. So that's what this is for.
Are they gonna pay for the vehicle, or are we just giving it to them?
We're gonna give it to them. It's gonna be a transfer to the Town of Ovid and to the other two departments that requested it.
Any more vehicles you don't need?
Right at this moment, no, but requests do come in, and I already have one on my list.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Issue number five, Seneca County Division of Human Services to enter into an agreement with Safe Harbors of the Finger Lakes for TANF and non-residential domestic violence services.
Support.
And a second? Alright. Tracy?
This would be a new contract. Our current contract was with our Mental Health Department, and that person has retired. And we... Margaret had approached me about looking for something different now that that person has retired. Safe Harbors does a lot of work for us and for mental health, and we, you know, think that this is a good fit, especially with the new, you know, home that will be opening somewhere in the county. They'll be having a shelter for victims of domestic violence, and we have two separate grants that we currently hold, so we would just be combining those two grants and having one provider.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We are adjourned.
Thank you. Alright. So we're gonna have a special board meeting tonight, and let's make sure what time it is, 6:04, so we can get started. Can you get a roll call of the board members, please?
Supervisor Reynolds? Supervisor Jeffrey Trout? Supervisor Brownell?
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart? Supervisor Boers?
Here.
Supervisor Hayes? Supervisor Ferrara?
Here.
Supervisor Cronenweather? Supervisor Reinhardt?
Here.
Supervisor Partee?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen? Supervisor Don Trout? Supervisor Enzal?
Here.
Supervisor Shipley?
Here.
You have a core, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please join me for Pledge of Leading in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. First up we got is number four, Public Works Supervisor Cronenweather.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Supervisors supports amendment to agreement with New York State for the New York State Veteran Cemetery and Finger Lakes.
Port.
Second.
Second? Any... Any discussion?
We have a motion and lots of seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
That's my part.
Sorry.
That's okay. Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Alright, number five.
Supervisors authorize submission of consolidated funding applications for the 2023 funding cycle.
Port.
Yeah, support?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, how much is this grant request gonna be for? I see the 106,000. And that's after it says 25%.
So the updated engineer slash architect's estimate for the project is 350,000, and it... Believe that we're eligible for 75% grant award, 25% local match, so if successful, the grant award would be 243,750, and the match 106,250.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business? Alright, new business. Supervisor Shipley?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to introduce the following resolutions for the board consideration in accordance with Rule Order Number 29.
Port.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor on a Rule 29?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay. Supervisor Hayes?
Resolution adopting and confirming local law six of the year 2023, a local law creating the water use law for Seneca County Water District Number One.
Support.
Second.
Got support there. Any discussion? Supervisor Jeff Trout?
A question. I'm not sure if it would be for Mitch or Dave. The... Could this... The late fee penalty of 1.5%, could that be applied to a municipality? The, could this, um, the, the late fee penalty of one point five percent, could that be applied to a municipality?
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And I believe... Get a motion for special order of the day. Supervisor Farrar?
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, everyone.